I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the deputy clerk to read the preamble.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and ordinances of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the city council meeting of the mayor and the city council of the city of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, January 22nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. In person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, Mayor Patrick Lovigson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There is a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams, here. Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
If everybody's had a chance to review the minutes, we need a motion. Need a motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 city council regular meeting minutes and the January 10th, 2024 strategic planning directions special council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. I have four presentations. We have a presentation of the Natural Resources Commission by Commissioner Dana Sevitz.
Thank you.
Dana?
I'm going to bring my cohort up, too. Good evening, everyone. Really, thank you all and appreciate the opportunity to sort of catch you up a little bit with what's going on with the NRC. There's a lot going on, that's for sure. And so what we thought we'd do tonight is just give you a little brief overview of what we've been up to. We want to do just a little introduction for some of the new people here about the commission and the commissioners. I want to locate the natural areas we're actually working in, just give you a brief history, a closer look of before and afters. Want to talk about the greenhouse program, the educational programs that we have, our outreach, and then take any questions. So if any of you have any questions during the presentation, just stop and yell them out, okay? So the more interactive, I think, the better. Oops, sorry. So the commission was first started in 2014. Agnes and her friend Carrie Spiegelhalter reached out to now late Mayor Helmer and they established the commission. At the time, there were four commissioners. More commissioners were added as we progressed. And the commission this February will be 10 years old. So these are the current commissioners. Peter Hahn in the back row, Seth Marcus, myself, Ed Madden in the bottom rows, John Kamish, Agnes, and Joe Moscow, who's also here tonight. These are the areas that we work in. So there are basically nine areas. This is all within like a three-mile radius of Prospect Heights. Up at the top in the yellow here, you have the ComEd Prairie. Here's the Hillcrest Lake and the Slough and the nature preserve at Gary Marava is right here, St. Alphonsus, Heron Pond, Tully Park, and then over in Wheeling. This is the Remnant Sedge Meadow and the Remnant Prairie that we actually maintain as part of our agreement with ComEd. This is, to put it all in context, this is what it looks like when you get out there in the real world. So starting with the Slough, we started this in 2014. This was one of our first grants with ComEd. This was a Green Regions grant. It's a matching grant and the city and Prospect Heights and Park District chimed in and it was matched by ComEd. The total was $20,000. And the task was to start the restoration work on the slough and to create a five-acre prairie over it underneath the power lines at off of Elmer's Road. So in 2014, this is what the slough looked like. So you can see that.
Just a thicket.
Patrick? Okay, here we go. You can see was, this is buckthorn here. Now buckthorn is one of the worst invasives possible. This thing secretes a chemical called the moden. It prevents anything else from growing underneath it. It also, if it's close to water in terms of leaf litter or close enough to water, it will have a 50% mortality rate on amphibian eggs. So that's why when we started, we didn't have frogs. We didn't have a lot of snakes. And then over here, there's a teasel forest that we had. These teasel heads are, it's an invasive thistle, very aggressive. Each one of these seed heads here contains about 50,000 seeds. So if you don't take care of this immediately, you're going to get in a lot of trouble. Over here, we had a reed canary infestation. So this whole area was reed canary and you can see invasive cattails there in the background. And just as a sort of a reference, this is a three-year-old kid standing in front of that while the buckthorn. It took a month of working, four hours every single night to punch that hole into the canopy of the buckthorn. And back in that day, we used to cut this, it was all done by hand, loppers and hand saws. We'd drag it up to the street, line it up, and then public works would come by and chip it up. And that all changed when Joe Wade came and we were able to use certified chainsaws and to prescribe brush pile burns. And it made it much, much easier to do. So in the middle picture there, you see that's sort of what it looks like when we got all the buckthorn out of there. Now this bottom picture on the right, I want you to just remember this. There's how many plants here?
There are 7,206.
So this was part of the purchase of the grant and this was to go into the areas that we were going to restore at the slough. They were taken out to these areas. Now, the areas are color-coded and the plants are, this has all been sorted out by soil type. So there's plants that can tolerate wetter conditions and plants that need drier conditions. So Agnes had laid all that out for the interns, I mean the volunteers. And unfortunately, at that time, we were planting everything with hand trowels. And it was, this was all old buckthorn roots, so it was very hard to get through. One of the big surprises, though, because this is a naturally occurring wetland and it's always been here, things started to come up out of the native seed bank that had been there for, who knows, 50 years. And so you see, like in the bottom right-hand corner there, you see geraniums that started to come up from the seed bank. Around 2018, it starts to look like this. The left-hand corner is the, oops, sorry. Left-hand corner here, this is the area that was the reed canary. The center picture here is, this is where the teasel was, infestation was. And here you see the start of the carp exposure and the aquatic plants going in. The trail system, as I had mentioned, was started. This is what it looks like a little bit later and more things start to emerge from the native seed bank. So here you have, I'm sorry. Native Michigan lilies, very high on the conservation rate, just came up out of the seed bank. The next year, we had a lot more. Mudflut annuals came up in the ephemeral pools, turtlehead. And biodiversity starts to really increase. You see things like the turtlehead, the lobelia cardinalis, fire pink. And these beautiful little trilliums started coming up out of just everywhere. And they're especially along the paths for some reason. This is what the slough looks like today. So the area that, on each side of the boardwalk there at the top.
That used to be all reed canary, 100%.
And so now it's, what it is, is the plants that actually should have been there probably and probably were there all along. If you look down here in the bottom corner, right along this area here, everything on this side was all buckthorn. Everything on this side was all cattails. And so this is the current state of it now. The cattails have been removed, the buckthorn's been removed. It's been planted out with the plants that should be there.
A lot came back.
A lot came back.
Over 80 species of native plants there.
Some more pictures from today. And this again up here in the, this is the same area here, so everything back here would have been buckthorn and everything out here would have been cattails. Even at night, it's just incredibly beautiful. There's another view here in the left-hand corner of the shoreline restoration that was going on with the aquatic plants. And they're the first line of defense in that kind of work. They absorb the wave action. And even in the winter, the trails are getting used to death. We've probably seen an increase of 65% to 70% of traffic on the trails at the slough. When you change the habitat, you change the inhabitants as well, the bird migrations, the species count went from 68 to over 100 now. The migrations are incredible. There's a northern shoveler in the left-hand corner. Last year at the lake, it was observed on one day, we had 60 double-crested mergansers. And the right-hand picture at the top is a juvenile black-crowned night heron. It's on the state threatened list. That's a juvenile and that indicates that there's nesting going on, which we, it's a big deal. And then, of course, now we have frogs because we don't have buckthorns, so that great blue heron has eaten the guy. Here's a pybilled grebe on migration. And then, of course, the ospreys are starting to fish here on a regular basis, as well as the eagle. And we actually have video of the eagle and the osprey fighting in midair over who's going to do the turf here. Here's a day when we had two eagles and we have a juvenile eagle that accompanies them on a regular basis, so.
We have photos from volunteers all the time.
Yeah. And one day, Agnes and I were working in the evening at the lake and we saw this, this is, there were six night, black-crowned night herons, six of them, that showed up. One of the six, one took off before I got the camera out. But that's absolutely incredible. And it's all a testimony to the habitat and the changes that have happened in the habitat. Great blue heron. And then, of course, you have these kind of creatures, too. This is the work of Kate Tully. Kate and Kate Tully, Mara Lovisoto, and Andy Fajoli formed a group called the Sunflower Group. And they have created this art walk with the Park District. And it's, they've done three seasons now. The fourth season is just getting ready to start. And then they did such a great job that last year, they won this award for the best of the best, the Park District, for the art walk. We also have the pop-up sale that happens every September. This year, it was really spectacular. Every year that we've done this, there's probably 50 to 100 people there at any given hour while this thing is going on.
And the Park District.
The comments we hear on a routine basis is, why can't we do this in our community? People are out walking the boardwalk, they're saying, I can't believe this is here and there's so much suburb envy here, that it's pretty interesting. So going back to the greenhouse program then, this group of.
7,206 plants.
That cost $10,000 with the grant money and was planted in there. We got done with all that planting and we said, we looked at each other and said we could do better. So we started our own greenhouse program. Agnes went and learned everything about, she possibly could learn about greenhouses. We started in two locations with three small greenhouses and expanded to the next version where everything was consolidated into one location. This is where we are now. This shed that you see in the background now was changed out to the first greenhouse.
Entire backyard has plants.
The very first year, we used $10,000. (inaudible). 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 We would not be able to do our projects without that volume of plugs. It's just absolutely essential. So that's how we get around the cost of it. Here's volunteers over here.
It's all done by volunteers.
Doing a transplant session. And also, I want to take a second here just to make a point. This, whoops, sorry. This is a pallet of soil that we buy to do the work. These are the two-inch cups and the one-inch cup. For all the programs that involve us giving away plants, so all of our community outreach, all of our education programs, all of our grow-it-don't-mow-it programs, commissioners pay for all of those materials. We don't use volunteer labor to do that.
Outside of the city budget, outside of the Park District budget.
We want to make sure that there's no entanglement there because we want to be able, we feel so strongly about education and goodwill in the community that it's very important to us. So we fund that ourselves, so there's no co-mingling, there's, it's a clean slate for us. So I just wanted to bring that up. Going on, moving on then to the ComEd Prairie conversion. This is Isabella Redolinski up in the top-left corner. She's second under John McCabe at the Coquenney Forest Preserve. We started, she's doing quadrant sampling, so these are one-meter squares that are GIS located and then they take a sample of all the plants.
It's a way to monitor every two years, the progression and what happens with the plants and how it's progressing.
So once those are done, the entire area was herbicided. Two days before, Agnes realized we're not going to be able to get seed-soil contact because of all the thatch. So she hired Horscher Brothers to come out and rake this entire area. They put it into big piles, hauled it away in nine trucks. Agnes flagged out the route so that people would not stray and overseed. And 30 volunteers came out on December 7th and actually did the seeding. It was 80 pounds of seed and over 90 species. This is sort of what it looks like in 2018. You can see it's maturing quite nicely, the paths are being well-defined. This is sort of what it looks like today. Just a note here, too. This tower right back here, if you stand right here, we were out there with Patrick one day taking a video, doing a video on the park. And if, as you walk through there on the trails, you'll see, pick a plant, any plant, there's probably 1,000, 2,000, 5,000 pollinators in the area on each of these plants. If you go back up to that tower, you can look and see it because everything slopes down and you have a view of about four acres. And you realize every single one of those plants has that many pollinators. There's over millions of pollinators as compared to turf grass. So the effect of this is really incredible. It's one of the reasons that ComEd has made this a feature for Prospect Heights. So in all their literature on their B program and their restoration work, Prospect Heights is elevated and we have quite a lot of visibility with them. Another shot of the diversity. And ComEd is, and also burns us. They won't let us burn it because of carbon arc danger, so if there's too much smoke, there's a possibility that the high-tension wires could arc down through the carbon and do a lightning strike. So they pay 8,000 bucks to burn this every time they burn it for us. This is the nature preserve at Marava. This is what it looked like in 2016. This was our second grant that we received. And this is Pine Street here. That was where the tennis courts were, the first slide. This is looking towards the library and Elm Street. This was, again, just a forest of buckthorn. It had mattresses, beer cans, syringes, everything you could possibly imagine in there. You had to get in there, you crawl in. So the first step is, of course, to take out all the invasives and then outline where the paths go, herbicide, and start planting. This is an interesting group down in the corner. They came out to volunteer one day. The guy next to Agnes is Tim Delariva. He was the president of Chase Bank on Elmer's and Euclid. And this is his Jeep club. That silver Jeep is his club. These guys are called the Jailbait, or Jailbars Jeep Club. And they came out to help. They were all chainsaw wizards and they literally just about cleared it in one day. Here's more volunteer work.
Eagle Scout.
And it was also coupled up with an Eagle Scout project, which we'll talk about with Eagle Scout projects here shortly. And this is what the nature preserve looks like today. So this is just an absolute hidden gem of a place. People go in there all the time with dogs, go for walks. It's close proximity to the Park District, to Eisenhower School and the library, and so it's used on a regular basis. Pollinator Park was our third ComEd Green Regions grant. And the project was to take the perimeter around Hillcrest Lake, which was ecologically useless, turf grass and shoreline erosion, and to restore it by turning it into a parion buffer.
The grant was the pilot program.
Right. So there was, there was also a pilot program for shoreline restoration in the grant.
Which was the grant.
All right. So the areas that were excluded was Owen Court and Willow Road where there was going to be work done with that. And you can see today, this is, or this is in 22.
But if you back up, the whole area around the shoreline is now the six-year plan.
Yeah, that's coming.
Okay.
So this is Pollinator Park today. There's all kinds of informational signage in there as well. And the waterfowl have decided that these tiers of shoreline restoration are really great places to raise their young. So you'll see a lot of, it's very close to the water, they need to get away from predators really quickly. They just hop right in the water and off they go. Turtles are nesting there and, of course, little bunnies. There's informational signage all throughout the park. There's seven of these. It's sort of a little game of, can you find me? And these, all these signs are located where there's a high probability of finding that species. And then in the final phases, one of the obligations was we had to have seeding. And so John came up with the idea of doing a solstice garden. We worked with schwaki stone, placed the stones, and then it's turning into this today. This is on pre-dawn on one of the solstices. This also, as Agnes was saying, included the shoreline restoration as a pilot program. This, in the lower left-hand corner here, is the startup condition. It was a straight two-foot drop down to just almost clay. The work starts with putting down erosion blankets, core logs, they're staked in, they're roped in, filled dirt's added. And then within two years, this is what it looks like up here and down here. And so you have now a natural shoreline that is taking over for the, what used to be just turf grass. If you look up here in the left-hand corner there, there is, that's turf grass right there. So the roots are two inches. By contrast, the plants that we use in the restorations, some of these roots are 15 to 20 feet deep. And you can see there's much more biomass below the surface than there is above the surface. And so the restoration holds all of the soil in place. And, of course, it takes nutrients from the water that's around it. So again, based on the success of that pilot, the city, you guys, funded a six-year program for 35,000 to restore the entire shoreline where it needs it. And so this was phase one. 6,000 plugs were used in the restoration of this. And this was phase two, which we completed last summer. There's over 8,000 plugs were used here. And again, you have aquatic plants that go into this exposure. We have invasive carps that like to root up plants. So if we don't exclude them from the plantings when they're just starting off, they'll get rooted up and they'll go away. So we exclude them, put the plants in, and then we have semi-aquatic plants and then the prairie plants, which is actually the buffer that's going to hold the runoff from the street. Tully Park, it's a landlocked park that the Park District owned. Residents were interested in making it a, turning it into a naturalized habitat.
So we helped.
So we helped them do that. We worked with the Park District and the Tully stewards. Two of the stewards are regular volunteers to the NRC. And this is sort of what it looked like in 2020. And this is what the park looks like today. This is the five-year plan in the upper corner that they submitted. We worked with them on this to include the property at 214 that was just taken down and cleared. Heron Pond, this was a real mess when we started.
Also Park District.
It's also Park District owned. It was basically cleared. Because of the conditions, we had to put erosion blankets down, you know, we planted and seeded into that, and it's on the way now. The Remnant Prairie, the definition of remnant is that it probably has never been farmed or used for agricultural purposes, so it's relatively pure. We think this is a remnant.
It's a degraded remnant.
And this served as our seed source for all of our plants. Every plant that was used the first three years of all of our restoration work. This one, and you can see it's really beautiful out there. And then the Remnant Sedge Meadow, which is, these are both in Wheeling and again, they parallel the bike path and it's part of the lease agreement with the Park District. We also started, this is our grow-it-don't-mow-it program. So starting with St. Alice, they had this detention pond that was virtually filled with water all the time, filled with mosquitoes. And they asked if we could help. We said, sure. We worked, they have a crew of their own that does all their maintenance on a volunteer basis. So we work with them, they work with us, they come out and volunteer with us.
They collected seed.
They collected seed. This is what it looked like, oops, sorry. This is what it looked like as it matured. And then here we are, collecting seed with them. We take the seed and process it. They come and do transplanting, they help with the seed processing. So it's a completely symbiotic relationship. We look for that in just about everything we do. That, and we want to put a very positive spotlight on the city of Prospect Heights, the Park District, and of course, us. This I put on because it's kind of funny, it's fire and brimstone. We actually burned their plot as well. This is Lauren Isinger. She's started volunteering this when she was five years old. She's now in high school. And she wanted a prairie in front of her house. So she talked her mom into it. Agnes went out and herbicided the front yard. You can see where there's a blue and a green difference. We planted it, we burned it, and there's, the bottom picture there is right before it goes to sines in October. And this is sort of what it looks like most of the summer.
Oh, my gosh.
ComEdison, we have a great relationship with them. They once said to us, if you need anything, just let us know. So we said, okay, we want an osprey pole. And so that was at nine o'clock one morning. The next day, about one o'clock, that pole was sitting out in front of.
Isaac Walden.
Isaac Walden, right on the road. Chainsaw Lewis and I went over and detailed it for the nest that we built in the garage. They came out, they drove the post out, they planted the post, and then hoisted the nest up there and filled it with sticks. And hopefully, next year, we'll see osprey in there. The Park District also had, with their tree initiative program, got Morton Arboretum for their 100-year centennial to donate 15 trees to the slough. And there was another significant number of trees that were donated to the Park District that they planted in the Isaac Walden Pavilion area. This was a real community event. This was an Eventbrite event they turned it into. So the Rotary Club, PHNRC volunteers, commissioners, all kinds of people came to us and enjoyed it quite nice. This is an example of our volunteers. So this is the Hymen family. Eva volunteers on a regular basis. That's her husband Doug, and that's their daughter. And they're. And Doug's mom set up a family foundation and gives each of them $1,000 every year. And she wants them to go and research charities to give that gift. And so they got together collectively and said, why don't we give it all, we'll all give the money to PHNRC. So that December, we received a $3,000 gift from them. We took the money and split it in three sections. We wanted to do something for the slough that would benefit the wildlife, that would benefit our people, and be something that would improve the aesthetics, so.
But also in remembrance of the family.
And honoring the family as well. So we purchased 100 Prunus americanus, it's American plums. We planted a 300-foot section of plums that run parallel to Elmhurst Road. When we cleared the buckthorn out of there, there was, some of the residents on Hillside Avenue complained about the noise because the buckthorn was going to act as the noise buffer. So we always had in mind, we've got to do something to fix that, and so this was a perfect solution on all fronts.
They're still little, but they're going to grow. They grow really fast.
They are producing plums already, so. And ultimately, at some point, you're going to be able to walk to Walgreens and just eat plums on the way. We also did Sci-Fi at the Slough. So the, Agnes and I, this is modern-day crop dusting, basically. Davy Tree, we met at Wild Things, which is a huge convention for people in restoration. And they have this specialized drone that distributes herbicide from above. They use a brand-new systemic herbicide that's safe for aquatic life. And it comes down from the top, it gets sucked up in the plant, and cuts off the flow of nutrients, so the thing just atrophies. This cost us $2,000. We gladly paid for it. Looking at the sheer volume of work that, we probably figured it'd be six years to get all that out by hand. So if this works, man, it's worth every cent. So we'll know when we burn this off in the spring and see what comes back up. It may need another treatment, but it's well ahead of what we were doing. We also do all of our own prescribed burns, and you know roughly the cost of prescribed burns. We have a crew of about eight or nine people, a lot of commissioners, a few volunteers. But really importantly, a lot of our former interns come back and help us burn. They're all burn certified. They're all working at other places now, and they come back to help.
Did you mention how controlled it was? I mean, just to mention how it goes all the way up to the boardwalk, so it's very, very controlled. Like, it stops at the boardwalk.
Agnes is really proud of that. I mean, when that flame is approaching that wall, it could be seven, eight feet high, and it's kind of threatening, but.
You know where it's going.
If you know where it's going and how to control it, it's great. So we also do Eagle Scout projects, and we've talked to Mark about coming up with a new system to try to get things that we can parcel into Eagle Scout projects. We get all kinds of requests. This was one of our first ones. This is Sam Subcheck. He brought out 47 volunteers on his day. And they actually created the trail that goes from Pine Street to Elm Street, down those steps, which they put in, and the stones in the creek. It was an amazing effort, and the dividends have absolutely been paid. This is Felix Wirick, and Felix's project was the boardwalk at the slough. So Felix works with us. We had materials brought in from Home Depot. It took John and I four days of working all day. Chris Wood helped out on that as well. We were cutting lumber for four days straight to get things to the sizes that we could build the modular units and the treads. And then, of course, we're detailing the treads. Here's some of the guys moving materials around.
The grant covered just the materials, and everything else was done by volunteer. Everything was put in by volunteers.
So we would lay out the sections, and then pound in the posts, and there's an omega strap that captures the posts that's attached to the sides of the boardwalk so it can float up and down with the rise and flow. This is roughly one acre of cattails that was supposed to be removed and reclaimed. It was part of the grant. So it took the two summer interns, a big part of the summer to get rid of these, and Agnes worked on it as well. And then it was planted with 8,000 plugs. It was done in two workdays, and Buffalo Grove Environmental Club did all the planting themselves. They had had a history of coming out to working with us on our workdays, which is why we ended up with them, which you'll see later. This is Brady Martin. He's a scout in Chicago. He asked for a project. We were short of, seed processing stands for processing our seed. We borrowed plans from Poplar Creek stewards, and he created 10 of these workstations. These all collapsed down for easy storage. Hans Millenack did the meditation garden at Tully Park. They took out all the invasives around the backside and planted shrubs. They cleared out the area, put down woodchips, built the bench. And all the area that you see behind in the lower right-hand corner there, all that area will come up and surround it. So it's going to make that room eventually like a very secluded room with an opening. And then Jason Pempras, his Eagle Scout project was.
This year.
This year, he did the installation of 3,800 plugs in the wet detention pond for the MacArthur Middle School wet prairie. He had another 37 people there. He had NRC volunteers, his scouts, their parents. And they had one Girl Scout troop who came out and just literally kicked bottom those guys. One girl planted 440 plants by herself. She's about this big. We named her Little Agnes. So education, we are in the schools. We're embedded in several classrooms all over. MacArthur Middle School, Buffalo Grove started this idea of having a prairie on campus as an educational resource, as an open, living classroom where they could go out and study things and learn in real time what was going on. So MacArthur glommed onto that idea as well.
And they've been coming out, we've been going over there for years.
Yes, for years.
And they've been collecting seeds, and they've been, yeah.
So this is up here, you see the, this is, we have two classes of 70 each. Of sixth graders come out, they go to the prairie, they collect the seed, they process the seed, and then eventually they go to the classroom. We come over and they mix the seed, and then they sow it into their prairie. We also do the science fair there every year. Now, this is Buffalo Grove High School, and the girl right here is Ari. She was a senior. And she had been with us for, what, two years prior? And continually bring out kids from Buffalo Grove High School to do work. She wanted to leave as part of her legacy of prairie on campus. She worked with us to do a presentation. She gave the presentation, and the district said, absolutely. And so they gave her an area. We thought it was going to be somewhere sequestered, and this is, the area they gave her is, this is the main entrance for students going into school. This is where the buses drop off and pick up. All the sports teams walk through this to get out. They, Rich Schramm is the guy who's in charge of the environmental club there. He said that they have the science classes there, they have art classes there. And one dean told him that when she has kids that are really agitated, she'll take them out to the prairie to calm down, and it works. So the benefits are, you know, just enormous. It's whatever you make of it. So once Wheeling, we've been intending Wheeling High School for probably five years too.
Wheeling comes out in this field, they bring buses, and about six times a year. So they bring the whole group over, six times a year on a field trip around the slough. And then they do transplanting also. They collect seeds with us, they work with us.
Uh huh. So this is their planting day. Once they heard that Buffalo Grove got their prairie, absolutely, they had to have one, so it was all okay all of a sudden. So this is their prairie in a mature state. They've added to this. And it's interesting about this one, I'm sorry. The science club, or the zoology club. Went out to try to find insects to identify on.
Any kind of life on campus.
On campus. They couldn't find any. And they ended up at the prairie, and they were just, they spent all the rest of the time there. They just found everything. We're also in with, we do internships with D-214. Percy High School, Rolling Meadows, Wheeling, Prospect, and Buffalo Grove. So part of doing this is the recognition that Prospect Heights, the city, really cares about education and helping other schools and entities in education.
And they do a lot of work, too.
They do a lot of work. So this is a 30-hour program. This is the last four interns we had. We started off with two, we went to three the next time, and then two, and then three again, and then this time was four. And we're currently interviewing three new applicants for spring. We do the summer camps with the park district. This is Ed in the creek. Agnes bought all these microscopes, and so they pull out microinverbits from the creek and examine them. Seth up here is doing skins and skulls. Agnes is leading kids on a tour and a scavenger hunt. They're looking at touch me knots. There's an art station, so one year they made walking sticks. We find all kinds of things like baby turtles. They do restoration, recycling games. And then finally, coming up, we have an outreach program where we do the art. We have an art slot at the library that is based on the natural environments of Prospect Heights. That's, this one right here is our own Andrew Hart. That was his show. We do speaking engagements, do tours. Here we are with the Brownies. One of the things we're really particularly proud of is our, working with the library on Nature Speaks. We have four speakers every year, one each season. These, all these people, these regional speakers are the top luminaries in the area. Gerard Wilhelm, Chris Anker, Bill Clament, Joel Greenberg. And then COVID was a blessing for us. We've been able to get national speakers like Doug Talome, Chris Helzer, Dr. Zahr, and then international speakers as well to do presentations, because they could do it on Zoom at a tenth of the cost they would charge if they were doing it in person. So we're really proud of this. This has been really successful. It's now like really easy to get speakers because it's kind of like a go-to thing. Community outreach events, we do the boardwalk, I mean, the block party and community day. We give away plants at those events. And then we do the Fourth of July parade. We always do Prospect Heights, and now we've done Arlington Heights for two years in a row. And the idea is to have a lot of fun. And I think the kid in the bottom right-hand corner sort of sums it all up. We do bird walk and classes with the park district. Mary Lou Mellon up there in the left-hand corner was with us for nine years. She just retired, so Cindy Lubecky will be taking over for her.
Two in the spring and two in the fall.
One of the most important programs that you guys all fund is the summer intern program. This is really making a difference in these kids' lives. They've gone on to do really amazing positions. Gabby Sinis right here is now the head restoration for Greeley, Colorado, for their program. So she's running the whole program. Every one of these kids, they've been to England, they work for the forest preserve, they work for. Cook County Forest Preserve. They work for the Chicago Park District. Evie went, Evie is right here. She went on an internship after she left us to the forest preserves in New Mexico to work on a seed source project for five months.
Eric worked with blending turtles.
Eric worked with blending turtles, and he's now a restoration ecologist for StanTech, the company that ComEd uses all the time. So in terms of bank for the buck, these, you know, these kids have a class every single morning for an hour and a half. Agnes works with them, and they do plant ID, they do best land management practices, safety. And by the end of their term in the summer, they know 200 to 300 individual species of plant.
Very well.
And we also partner with all these other organizations, and again, we look for symbiotic relationships all the time. So we help them, they help us. Popular Creek, the Bird Conservation Network, ComEd, the library, of course, you guys, the park district, the forest preserves, and Citizens for Conservation. All are really good friends. So how do we do it? It's volunteers. And all of our volunteer workdays have a communal spirit. This is Zeke, and Chainsaw Lewis is a little harness there.
Zeke is now seven.
Yeah. We like to have, you know, there's got to be a degree of levity in these workdays to keep people coming back. And again, I said that they're a communal event. These guys find ways to give back in all kinds of different ways. Spencer and Mary over here started an adopt a trail program. So they took sections of our natural trails and got people to take authorship for it. So that's one thing we don't have to do. It's being done outside of it. Maya here, this is Maya, our volunteer. This is her son and her daughter. They arranged a deal with MWRD to get 200 oak seedlings, which were donated to us to give away at the block party and everything else. So always great, great input from our volunteers. Here's those, in the lower right-hand corner, you see all those stands that were built by the Eagle Scout being used. There were over 47 people there. At the very start of that, we just started, we sat down, everybody's assembled. And usually, the Santo cranes do a flyby. This time, we had an eagle. It was literally just 200 feet above us, and it kept circling the group. And then he looked down, and then he took off. And it was like, wow, talk about a gnome. And of course, we have workday dogs. But we like to have fun. So this is, we do a lot of fun events, you know, for a spirit of corps. This is a moth party. And Metz Zeke on the far right and his sister, and then the neighbors' kids. They're really, they're funny. So this is the moth party. Here they are identifying moths. We do solstice party on every solstice at the Hillcrest Lake. And then photo booths. And then we had these guys show up on Halloween. Did it work? This was a scouting crew. So that's all we got. What I want to do is, in closing, just leave you with some really beautiful photos of the environment here. Prospect Heights is so unique, can't even begin to tell you what it, it's just an untold beauty. And all hours of the day, it looks completely different. So with that, we'll take any questions. Any questions? You guys have come a long way. I can say that. I remember your very beginnings, and that is a lot. You do a lot. And, you know, I'm glad you're able to work with other organizations to raise money, because I know that's hard. You know, we fight that battle every day trying to raise money, in a different kind of way, but to do things, so. Absolutely. Well, the funding we get from you guys makes it, certainly is very important to us, and it really makes it happen. But we also look, any opportunity, we can't solicit because we're commissioned, so. But people are just so good-natured and appreciate what we're doing so much, they just happen to donate, so. Nice.
I have a quick question. The cattails, do you thoroughly eliminate them, or do you keep some of them?
I think it's impossible to do that because there's so many, and then they are really vital for moss grass, even though they're the hybrid cattails. So there's going to be sections that are left, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
I just want to add something that the council may not be aware of. Every year you get, in general, I think we place it on the consent agenda about the burn permit. The care that they put into it is remarkable, and sometimes it's like jazz music. It's the notes you don't play. But they'll target a day for a burn, and then, oh, it's too dry, or it's too windy. And these people, it's got to be just perfect. And from a city standpoint, why that's important is I'm familiar in prior lives. I think there's a burn at Northbrook at the forest preserve there. It became a box alarm fire. This is many years ago. Illinois Beach State Park had a burn, became a box alarm fire. That's the last thing you want to happen. That's the last thing you want to happen, and it's really appreciated how careful and considerate you guys are with burns.
Well, thank you, Joe, appreciate that. Because we work in completely surrounded by residences, everything we do is A in the fishbowl, but more importantly, you have to be careful with everything, whether it's applying herbicide, doing prescribed burns, you know, you worry about sightlines for plants, for certain people's house, am I gonna block them off? All that stuff is taken into consideration, whereas if you were doing normal restoration out in the middle of nowhere on 400 acres, you really wouldn't care. So, it's real different, it's a completely different task than just doing normal restoration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no appointments or confirmations. Is anybody here to speak on public comments on any agenda matter? Really, there's no agenda matters here, but, no? Okay. Item seven, we have no consent agenda today, no old business, but we do have new business. Number nine, item A, resolution R-2405, staff memo and resolution authorizing the purchase of a utility van from water and sewer funds through purchasing cooperative program for a price not to exceed $53,268. Need a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Item 10, staff elected officials and commission reports, this month's December financial report will be presented by Assistant Finance Director Danahill.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Present the December 23 financial report. 67% of the year has passed. Within that, we have total revenues for the city of, it's 57% of the budget, with total expenses reflecting only 47% of the budget. A couple items in notes, we had a vehicle sticker campaign to try to capture those who failed to buy their stickers for last year's vehicle sticker, FY 2324 vehicle sticker. We were able, this campaign started in October into November, a little bit of December, we were able to identify 800 new vehicle sticker purchases in this campaign, and recovered approximately $100,000 worth of revenue on those 800 stickers that we found. We are gonna be starting the new FY 2425 vehicle sticker, it'll be starting in February 1st, and the mailings will be going out for that. So, I'd like to thank staff and everybody who helped participate in the mailing process and able to identify some new stickers out there. We also had the help of our city attorneys to work on our sewer collections, and within that, the city attorneys helped us send out some letters on some larger balances of people who owe. And to date, that happened in the end of December, and to date right now, about 10% of those people have responded to us paying what they owed, and also set up a payment plan for those who had some larger balances. We also, as a staff, sent out letters for balances under $300, and to say about 58% of those people have responded on that, either paying their full or have set up a payment plan to start paying off what they owed to the city. So, we are still working on that, and we're still working with the city attorneys to try to get those who had not responded with some of the larger balances. So, we're, hopefully, people will listen to the letter and pay off what they owe to the city on that. That's what I have for the financial report. Everything else seems to be in line with budget expectations, and also with the expenses. Staff is also monitoring, making sure that they're not going over budget on their spending, so. And we're also starting the budget, starting this month and next month, we have staff members looking at their budget, and we'll be having a meeting in the next couple of weeks to go over what they're looking for for next year, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. We'll look for elected official comments to my left. Anybody have any comments or reports?
Just a small little comment. The Greater Wheeling Chamber is now working on updating their bylaws because they're a little outdated, so that they match the needs of our community now, so, that's all.
Elected officials to the right, anybody have any comments or report?
I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry about my phone. I just wanted to say the application process is now open for any high school student that lives in a town that falls under the jurisdiction of District 214, so it's Scholarship America Assistance Fund, dollars for scholars, 214. Last year, we gave out 13 $4,000 scholarships. We welcome parents and students to look up the scholarship process and make an application.
Okay, thank you. You always have great raffles for very unusual things you wouldn't normally be able to do related to the airport, so that's always neat.
That's true.
Okay, staff to my left, any reports? Chief?
No, Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Anybody else? No? Am I right? Peter? Doug? Nobody? With that, we'll go on to the approval of the warrants. If the clerk would read the warrants.
Okay. Our total for the warrants was $295,321.49. We had a wire payment on January 12th, 2024 payroll was $183,406.22. A December Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment amounted to $23,343.14, bringing the total warrant amount to $502,070.85 for tonight's council's approval, please.
Okay. We need a motion to approve?
So move, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment on non-agenda matter items? Anybody? No? We have no executive session, so there'll be no action on that executive session, and with that, I look for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.